Good day Fayetteville. It's been a busy day today. I've been out running around, meeting people in the community. Uh going to various meetings and uh doing what I've been doing since the uh beginning. Uh when I announced my campaign. Um one of the things that I didn't do is I didn't take the time to get on social media and kinda tell y'all a little bit about me. I've been out canvassing, knocking on doors. Uh I met a lot of people, got a lot of great feedback. Uh but I wanted to give an opportunity to, for people to meet me uh via social media. Uh because I'm not gonna be able to hit everybody's door, even though I've been working really hard trying to. So uh first of all, I just wanna introduce myself. My name is William Milborn the third. Um and I'm running for Fayetteville City Council District One. Uh District One pretty much borders around MacArthur Road. Um uh the two ninety-five on back to uh just a little bit before you get to uh Country Club Drive, uh that whole area there, a couple of little areas on Fort Bragg. Um I'm running for this seat and I I would love to have your vote. Um I'm a family man. I have uh eight children. Uh four of my children are grown and they're gone out the house. And then I have four that are still home with me. Um my wife and I, we are avid homeschoolers and uh we've been uh homeschooling uh the entire time that we've been married. Uh so the first thing I wanna talk about is why I am running for office, okay? Deciding to run for the Fayetteville City Council was not a small choice for me. I've been asked repeatedly over the years to assume a more public position in leadership. I've often declined because I understood assuming responsibility or additional responsibility, I should say, such as a public office would require a significant investment of my time and my money. Fortunately, partially due to the early retirement that I've had, um I do have time now. However, the money, that could be debatable. But I do have enough to be content and to continue to fulfill God's mandate for my life. Uh but I but I'm very excited about coming out of retirement and getting back to work uh and working for you. Um you'll have me full-time. I don't have any distractions. Um and uh I think that I'll be a valuable asset to uh the community. So now I'm stepping forward as a politician. And it feels kinda funny saying that because I'm not really a politician. I'm really just a regular guy. Um as I said before, family man. But I'm stepping uh forward, not just as a politician, but really as a concerned citizen. I, like you, have been concerned about what is going on in our local politics. Um I am a real estate investor and I have a lot of property here in Fayetteville. I've invested in businesses in the community. Um and um and 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 I decided to to stay here and keep my family here and uh I plan on um growing and becoming a prominent member in uh society. So I have a vested interest and um because I'm concerned, I believe it's important for me to make a different contribution to our city. Uh and my contribution is gonna be on the political stage, at least until someone else comes along and takes over this position because I plan to um leave um District One better than when I came. Okay? I'm a servant leader. My leadership style is a servant-style leadership. Uh the whole time I was in the military, that's one of the things that they uh they wrote on my NCOER. They were saying that this guy loves to serve and he's a patient leader. Um my family and I have been in the people business uh for a very long time. We serve our community um through ministry and uh various other facets. Um we actually love to serve, you know? Uh in fact, our life is ministry and our motto is that if we're not doing something for someone, then we ain't doing nothing. So let me be clear. My motives are pure. I have no ulterior motives or agenda for wanting to seek office but to serve the people of Fayetteville. Um I I don't have any uh kind of uh vanities that I'm pursuing. I'd rather be power or uh some kind of um uh notoriety or any of that foolishness. Uh it really is about utilizing my gifts and talent to to make a difference. But I'm not uh I'm not gonna continue to get into that. Um the simple fact is that I have a deep conviction conviction that the gifts that I have inside of me um can be used to help our community. So when I decided to run for office, I know anything about politics. I started um looking for political consultation. And I was shocked by the advice that I was getting, quite frankly. I'm gonna tell you a little bit of advice that I had got from the consultants. And they wanted to charge me ridiculous amounts of money to represent me. Number one, they said that I ra- I should raise lots of money through fundraisers so I can influence voters through various forms of media. Get together with these little shindigs, rub elbows with people and try to finesse them for money. That's basically how I interpreted it. Uh I do realize that you do need money to run a campaign and one of the reasons why I decide to pour my own money into the campaign is because um this is a a a burden or or passion that God has given me and I believe that I should be the first one invested. Um that I I said by me investing my own money and uh not really seeking donations, I I think that's a clear sign that I believe that um I can win and I'm fully invested in um my message and and uh my abilities to do what needs to be done. Um the second thing they told me, they said that I should find, expose, and attack the perceived flaws of my opponent to make myself look good. That's crazy. I should research and trumpet mistakes in ads um and speeches to discredit and slander uh my opponents. Well, y'all see the ads every year that come out. You know, everyone's talking about what folks ain't doing, uh what they done done wrong, what affair they done had, all of that. I I'm not going that route, you know? Um I wanna run a clean race based on uh merit. Um an honorable race that is based on principles and issues. They said if I was asked anything controversial or possibly damaging to my image, just ignore it and deflect. They actually were willing to give me classes in how to do that. Well, I don't believe in that. I believe that if there's uh something that comes up and uh you know, we all make mistakes, we're human, then we address it, uh we confess it, uh we ask for forgiveness and and we fix it and move on, you know? Um we're living in a culture now to where no one wants to admit that we're all flawed human beings. Um and I am one too. Uh though I do walk and I try to walk worthy of any vocation that I've been called to, I'm human. I'm gonna make mistakes. Um so that was another thing that I told him I just couldn't do. Four, they said if or when necessary, lie instead of striving to be honest and truthful and introspectively and carefully considering if there could be something that I can change, you know? Um you know, running a race, people are gonna be critical of you. They're gonna point out all your shortcomings. And in doing that, I should take that and I should actually listen to what they're saying and maybe try to refine and make myself better. Instead of um not being honest with myself and realizing that, hey, there may be something that I can get right, so the point of the story is if you are looking for a typical politician, I'm not the one. Um I am a regular guy that loves his country, that loves his city, and that ultimately loves God and people. And I wanna serve you based on those merits. Uh and I don't wanna manipulate you into voting for me for any other reason um than what you believe that I can do for um our district and for our city. With that being said, I'm not a politician, but if I were a politician, I thought about it. I said, what would I say? Well, first thing I'd probably say, again, I'm not a politician, is the current city council is doing a horrible job. That sounds about right. That's what someone would say who wants to win, right? They ain't doing this. They ain't doing that. They this, they that. Don't wanna say anything positive about them. But they just wanna continue to tear them down and say, hey, they uh they suck. I'm not that guy. I would that I would say, the crime is out of control in Fayetteville. You know, the murders, the property crimes, et cetera, et cetera. You know, because that's good rhetoric. That gets people excited. You know, that gets people focusing on the negative things and then you can swoop in and be the superhero and change things. I would say police relationships with our citizens is terrible and ration ti- racial tensions are higher than ever. We need police reform. Or it's like one of my opponents is saying, we need to fire the chief, okay? Uh citizens are protesting for Jason Walker. The officers don't like her. You know, um she sucks. Uh again, those are not my words. If I were a politician, those are the things that I would be saying to get you emotional, okay? I'd be talking about the homelessness that is encroaching everywhere in our city. You know, uh they they're out and they're out in full force. Uh I would talk about the drug dealers, the uh the drug addicts, the human trafficking that's going on in our city. And I would I would make you fearful and afraid, you know, and I would refer to us as Vietnam. Uh even though we are now the Can Do City, you know? Uh I would um accuse the current city council of being corrupt. I would point out that they like to hold secret meetings or uh they like signing non-disclosures so that they can't talk to the uh the people. Uh instead of uh demanding bids, they like to make secret contracts. I I would say stuff like that. And I would say the half the things that they're doing down there is for personal gain. Uh again, I'm being facetious when I say these things and I say to you, if I were a politician, that is exactly what I would be running on, okay? But I'm not a politician and you get it, okay? I don't wanna be that guy, okay? And some of the things I said are laughable. And some of the things, you know, of course are not, you know? Some of the things are maybe true and some of them may be exaggerated. Uh but the point is, I'm not a politician and I'm not gonna exploit these issues and insult your intelligence without coming to the table with real viable solutions. Do we have problems in Fayetteville? That's that's a given. Yes, we do. Every city does. In fact, I would even go on to say, every family does. You know, we're human, okay? But we need to focus on solving these issues and not always pointing out the problems. We need to have solutions, okay? So the facts are that crime in Fayetteville, uh the reports show that it's up. Murder is up and of course, we point to that there's other crimes that are going down. But violent crimes are a problem and we need to get that under control, okay? But that's not just a problem in Fayetteville. That that's across America. But just because it's across America does not mean that we should not um solve this problem or or get some kind of a a hold of it. So so let's be honest. Um these are not Republican problems or Democratic problems. These are American problems. You know, that's another thing, is that we try to be divisive. And we wanna say that it's because this party's in office or it's that party in office, when the truth of the matter is that you know, um it's 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 a weed problem, you know? Fayetteville is unique because it is a a melting pot, so to speak, you know? Regardless of what party that you're in, we don't really see partisan politics here because we are so diverse and that is our strength, you know? I wanna focus on things that are our strength and find common solutions. Um but the reason why I don't like talking about these things because they are counterproductive. Uh talking about what is wrong all the time does not solve our problems. In fact, all it does is create more. I'd rather spend my time building positive relationships in our community and working towards solutions that will bring us closer together uh and being a voice that will inspire people to prove that Fayetteville is a Can Do City. Which brings me to the elephant in the room, so to speak, the current Fayetteville City Council. Since I started running, I've been hearing nothing, well, I shouldn't say nothing, but a lot of bad things about our current sitting council. And some of the things that I've been hearing are true, some of them aren't true. I've done research. I've talked to the city manager myself, you know? I've talked to other elected officials. I've uh I've talked to um, I've gone to meetings and I've and I've gotten the facts. There are some things that we need some work on, but uh let's be honest. When someone runs as a leader in our city, I think that there's a part of us that should honor them for the service that they are doing. Um I said that to say this. While I may have some differences for with some of the members on council or I may not agree with their approach to doing things, I still honor these people because they are serving our country and some of them have been serving our our country and our city for a while. And while I may not agree with everything that they do, I I will give them the due respect. Um as as a Christian man, one of the things that I do frequently is I pray for my leaders, okay? Uh I pray that they can make good decisions because their decisions that they make will affect my family, you know? Uh I want to uh make sure that I'm not uh tearing them down, but if any opportunity presents itself to where I can offer some advice or a a helping hand, I want to help them. So so this is this is what I'm saying. Uh we need to focus more on, instead of tearing our leaders down, we need to um pray for them. We need to help them make better decisions. We need to get involved. And then we need to lift them and our city uh up, okay? Um so I I I say uh that's real, y'all. I mean, that's not politically correct, uh but that's real. Uh think about it. In a community, much like a church or a family, there are many roles that people can play. And in order for any organization to function, whether it be a government, uh whether it be a family, whether it be a business, uh people need to underro- understand their roles and they need to play their part. So wha- what I would say in Fayetteville, um we we have to play our part. We cannot just complain about what's going on. We gotta get involved. So when I started seeing that there were problems, I stopped wanting to complain and I said, well, I'm gonna get involved. I'm going to be the change. And hence is where my my slogan came from, okay? So um in today's society, uh I'm a leader in many capacities myself. You know, I pastor. Uh I'm a father. I'm a husband. Um these are the most important roles in my life, you know, a a a business owner, a entrepreneur. Um and I I understand the burden of leadership. You know, I've served in the military. I've had soldiers under me, you know? I've I've worked for uh corporations. Um leaders are under immense pressure to make decisions that affect the lives of the people that they serve, okay? That is the reason why I understand I need to pray for those who are in authority over me. But with that being said, I do understand that if these people aren't doing what they're supposed to do, that we have a fiduciary responsibility to do what we're supposed to do, which is to get them out of office. Um it's no secret that people with economic influence, who are often greedy, self-centered, and short-sighted, put a lot of pressure on our leaders. Often seeking ways they can persuade them to abandon their deepest convictions once they are seated in office. It has been said that some of our leaders have experienced that through the various Fayetteville elite. At least those are the rumors on the street. I have not been able to validate that. However, realizing this truth, it is my prayer that if I am elected, the citizens of this great city will also pray for me and the other leaders elected also, that we can walk worthy of the calling or the vocation, um the service that we've been called. Uh and y'all play a part in this. You know, I want to make sure that you understand the process, that you understand what we're supposed to be doing so that you can hold us accountable and we so that we can do our part and then you guys are doing your part by getting involved also. Um I guess my point is that we're in this together, okay? We get the government that we deserve. And if we're running around here in Fayetteville and we're saying that we have crappy leadership, which is uh the consensus of a lot of people, well, obviously, we must deserve the leadership. So now is the time for you to go to the polls, the polls and uh and replace that leadership, should you feel. That is the solution. But we cannot continue to complain and not be a part of the uh the change, okay? So like I was saying, I believe that as a leader, we have a fiduciary responsibility to walk worthy of the office in which we eli- elected to occupy. It is uh really both a privilege and an honor to be elected to serve. And it's my conviction that all leaders should serve in integrity and with transparency with the goal of striving to remain above reproach. With that being said, it is my strong opinion if leaders fall short of the high and honorable standard while serving in an office or public a public trust, it is the duty of the people to vote them out, as I just said. Your voice matters and a large part of your voice is your vote. So as I'm running around again and I'm talking to many of you and you're telling me all the problems that you're having with your elected officials, I'm telling you one solution. It's for you to vote. Um our voting turnout is horrible in Fayetteville. I think we're racking in maybe twelve percent and that's probably on the high end, okay? If we're only getting twelve percent of the people to the polls, we're kinda getting the leadership we deserve. And if you're one of the ones that are complaining and you're not voting, then you are part of the problem. Again, I'm not a politician. I'm just telling you facts. We gotta vote. We gotta get engaged and we gotta get involved. So again, my name is William Milborn the third and I'm running for office and I'm hoping to earn your vote. I've already started building a website where I started the preliminaries to introducing myself and I wanna use that we- website to uh as a platform to keep you engaged. I realize that many of you are out there working every day, you know, nine to fives or whatever, and then you're getting home. Some of you gotta take care of kids, run the kids here, there, and everywhere, and you're really just too tired to even get involved in politics. Well, my job as your uh future elected leader is to make it easy for you to at least be informed so that you can get involved in any capacity that you that you want to. Uh I'm gonna make sure that you know who I am and that you know exactly what I'm doing and what the other representatives in your city are doing also. Uh I I I fully believe that when we have more people sitting at the table, we get more solutions. Um to give you an example, um one of the reasons why crime is high in some of the communities is because people don't talk to one another. It's amazing what you can do by just simply getting to know your neighbors around. How much that can reduce crime? We can't be so busy that we don't find time to to learn who is to your left, to your right, and who to your front of you. Um when someone drives into your neighborhood and they don't belong there, you're gonna know that they don't belong there if you know uh Tina's number next door or 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 Bob's number uh to the left of you. So simple solutions like that that can help change um the 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 trajectory of Fayetteville where you can be the change. Uh so anyway, I started a website for basic um platform. Uh as your candidate, it's important for you to understand though that I need your support. Community involvement, community engagement is something that's at the top of my list. If I get you informed, then you can help hold me accountable and make sure that I'm serving you to the best of my ability. And if for some reason after I teach you what I'm supposed to be doing, you discover that I'm not doing it, vote me out. If elected, I make a commitment to representing you, okay? Uh which means we can only have great success if we both do our part, like I said before. This is a partnership and a team effort. Uh there's no I in team. So I need you to get involved. I need you to get out and vote. I need you to understand that your voice matters and your vote matters. So vote William Milborn the third for your next District One candidate for the city of Fayetteville um city council. That's pretty much all I gotta say for introductory speech. Um I'm gonna try to post on social media a little bit more. Um I do prefer to uh be engaged with the community and uh time is running a little short, so if I haven't made it to your neighborhood, please forgive me. Um we're definitely coming. Um we'll be at the polls. Um the uh election is uh starting. The primary early voting is starting on the twenty-eighth through the fourteenth of May. This is an excellent time for you to get out there and vote William Milborn or vote for whoever your candidate is. Because um when you go for your early voting, if you're not registered, they can register you on the spot and get you all straight so that you can come back again and you can vote into the elections. Now, some of y'all don't understand the election process. The primary voting that is gonna be going on, starting on Thursday, is solely so that you can get your candidate into the race and it can be narrowed down to two candidates. And our district, District One, there's actually three candidates that are running. My first goal is to get you to the polls so that you can vote William Milborn the third uh so that I can run against um the second candidate uh again, and then we run for the actual election on the seventeenth of July to the twenty-third of July. Uh again, uh I can't do this without you. My one of my first priorities is higher voter turnout. I wanna see people on the polls, you know? I I wanna see more than twelve hundred people voting per district. You know, if we have twenty-two thousand approximately people in the district, I mean, I would love to see fifty percent. I've told some of the other people running, they said it's never gonna happen. I would love to see y'all prove them wrong. I believe that people do wanna get engaged and and they wanna get involved. Uh as I'm speaking with people, they're just burnt out with politics because elected officials only come around once every two years or once every four years, and that's when it's time to vote. And then they'll never see you. Well, I promise you that I'm not gonna be that guy, okay? This is short-term this time. I wanna establish uh community uh organizations, community leaders um so that we can get community engagement uh to a to a to a level. Uh I I really wanna make District One the the premier district of the city, uh especially when it comes to um community engagement and community involvement. Uh um citizen awareness, uh as I said before, is one of my top priorities. I want you aware of what's going on and then I want you involved in the policy. Right now, they're talking about the marketplace. You know, of course, they're not gonna tear it down, but they'd wanna repurpose it. They put out stuff asking you what your opinion is and the people aren't telling them what it is. You know, uh we have the marketplace. Uh we we have a lot of issues. But y- your elected officials need to hear from you and the only way that we're gonna hear from you is to make you aware of what's going on and then for you to get involved and let us know how you feel about it. Uh transparency and accountability in government, uh that's a big issue for me. Um there's a couple key issues um that don't sit right with me. One is that uh sometimes uh in Fayetteville, we're entering into contracts um without the proper oversight. Uh we're entering into contracts that aren't beneficial um for the city but are more beneficial for the developers. And I want contracts that are gonna be more win-win. And I believe that the only way that that's gonna happen is uh transparency and accountability. Now, I I give a small example of something that didn't Now, I I'll give a small example of something that didn't happen in our city. But just happened down there in South Carolina with this uh stadium that they were building. You know, here I seen a couple days ago that the whole thing went haywire. Um and the newspaper is trying to figure out what went wrong because they don't know what the details are. And it sounds similar to what's going on with our parking garage um here in Fayetteville. You know, uh the city managers and um uh city staff, elected officials are making decisions. Uh for the city, but they're not giving us the details and we're filing information requests and we're we're still not getting the full picture. And then when something goes wrong, no one wants to tell us exactly what's going on so that we can ensure that it doesn't happen. Uh again, those are things that uh that we need to fix. So we need transparency and accountability in government. Uh first responders and community relationships, another hot topic for me, another priority. I think that one of our primary problems is that we're not communicating effectively with the people who we serve. Some of the issues that I've learned since I've been running could have been solved with communication. For example, um when they had the riots going on during the COVID. Um I I had a business and I was scared, just like a lot of business owners. Uh because uh they were breaking into businesses, they were stealing and they were looting and. Some people would assume just because I was an African American that I felt like they wasn't gonna do that to me. Well, we was on pins and needles that night. Uh we didn't know what was going on. The only thing that we knew. Was that the city of Fayetteville Police Department said they wasn't responding to anything. Uh that was the night that I I said I wasn't gonna be uh doing business again uh in that capacity in Fayetteville. Um what I think could have happened different that night. Because hindsight is twenty twenty. We learned that the police chief didn't make the best decision that she felt like she should make on the ground and the results were. That uh there were no lives lost. Um we did not have happen to us that happened to other cities. Uh we did suffer a lot of property damage, um but she didn't communicate. And that that's that's my point that I was trying to make. Simply communicating to her staff, to her employees, to her officers. Could have saved uh a lot of, I call it drama along the lines. Uh when we have these ethics uh concerns. Communicating and letting us know what the concerns are and what the results are, what we're doing to fix it. That can go a long way as far as fixing the problem. Uh again, we're filing all these um. Uh requests downtown to figure out what's going on because the government is not communicating to the citizens. So long story short, this transparency, accountability, first responders, community relationships are really big issues for me. Uh I wanna work with the homeless, um affordable housing and homeownership. Those are uh those are issues also. Again, um as I say on my brochure, we get the government that we deserve. If you don't vote. And you don't get people that represent you, you deserve it. This is your opportunity to get out here and vote and let your voice be heard. Uh and you vote by being the change, okay? Um and an engaged citizen will get the the government that they deserve. And uh if you want a good government, if you want a good leader in District One, um I encourage you to vote William Milburn the third. Uh my website is can be found at uh William Milburn, that's uh M I L B O U R N E. Fayetteville N C dot com or dot org. Or if you want something easy to remember it by, uh you can go to W W W dot yourvoicemattersvote dot com. Uh another thing that you need to know is uh on my website, I actually have ways for you to vote. Um to find out if you're registered, if you're not registered, to get registered. Um I have on there what the district is, the neighborhoods, I'm gonna add the um apartment complexes. Uh on there, uh but I wanna have an informative website. Uh I I let you know what a city council person is because I learned that not only did people not know who their representative were. While I was out there, they don't even know what a city council representative is. Um we do have a um a a a management style. Of um of leadership here on council, uh which is which is a beautiful thing. Um we have a a a beautiful system to where uh in order to get things done. Uh we have to have majority vote on our council, so it's not a um a mayor uh driven. Body of government. And a lot of people don't understand that. Um uh when you repres- when you get representatives, uh we all come to the table, we all vote. And we make the decisions together. There's no one all, I'm the sheriff, you know, you can't do anything. Without the the whole body or majority of the body agreeing. Um so um uh we need to get a a a uh representatives that have your interest, not just in District One. But in the other district or have the best interest of the city uh and and the citizens uh and mine in office, so. We need you to vote. Like I said, I'll come live again. I'm sorry that I made this so long, but I I did at least wanna give y'all an opportunity to to get to know me and to uh. And to know who I am and uh I wanna thank my daughter who's on the other side of the camera for for doing this for me. Um I'm I'm not a social media person. Um see you at the polls on the twenty eighth through the fourteenth of May. Um if I'm out there, don't hesitate to come, shake my hand. Again, I need your vote, William Milburn the third. Uh thank you and good night.